Welcome, everybody, to the first official meeting of 2023. Yesterday, the Commission had an organizational meeting and it's my turn to be president. No, I don't think there's anything to that other than just, oh, there is, normal rotation. We have a couple of issues to touch on before we get into the printed agenda. First, I wanted to give Abby Watson an opportunity to introduce your guest.
Well, I'm excited. We found an HR coordinator to fill Cheryl's vacancy. This is Amberly Canham, and she comes from Franklin, Ohio. A little bit of background knowledge to some of the systems we already use, and we are already putting her to work.
Well, welcome. Would you like to?
That's all you got?
Very happy to be here. It's been very welcoming. It's been great. So I appreciate the opportunity. Very excited to be here.
Do you reside in Fairfield County yet?
Yes, I, yeah, I've been there for about two years. I'm actually in Carroll, so.
All right. Well, welcome.
It was much, much better.
I passed you earlier this morning, and I caught myself wondering, you know, who you were. And so I asked around, you know, and found out, but it's very, very good to see you, and thank you for joining us. Also, this morning, we have some unfortunate news that James Manko is going to share with all of us.
What the heck? What's going on? What's going on? No, so I submitted my resignation. I've found another job. Really the biggest thing, and I've shared this with the audience. It's closer to home. This young lady had just mentioned about commuting. I've been driving down here for going on 18 years now from Columbus. And so I just thought that it's, you know, time to be a little bit closer to home. So I have accepted a position with the City of Westerville. It's a 15-minute commute. There's no more than that. There's no problems, no nothing. That's really all there is to it. Just want to express my gratitude to the Commissioners for, you know, not only support for my tenure as Executive Director, but before that, you know, I will never forget, you know, going back to 2009 when regional planning was in the midst of some very dark days when our budget was zero, our payroll was zero, and the Commissioners were there to, you know, throw us a lifeline. And, you know, I'm never going to forget that, and that, you know, we can't, we can't operate without you guys. So, you know, thank you so much just for all the support. Some other people just want to recognize this kind of thing today. Stacy Nicely, who, you know, has helped me for years with the CDBG financing. I mean, again, I can't, I cannot do that without her. So that's been great. And, you know, we've, we've had millions of dollars coming to this county in the past 12 years through that, through the program. So a lot of work, I would say, if, you know, the kids down in Bremen, Ohio can have a decent playground to go play at, it's worth it. Tony has been great at utilities, all he does. I don't see Jeremiah here today, but him over at the Engineer's Office. Again, we can't really function without Tony and Jeremiah, so their help has just been tremendous. And Carrie for tying me down off the wall a number of times throughout the years. Thank you. So that's all I have.
Well, James, you know, on behalf of the Commissioners, we certainly appreciated your service very much, and thank you for that. As I go back just through my memory of things, I'm recalling a reasonably smooth transition from Holly Matty to yourself, which I think was very helpful. I'm also just like faintly recalling a time when you might have resigned once before, briefly as a tour. This, this one seems different.
Different circumstances.
Yeah, yeah, but, you know, so obviously it's the Regional Planning Commission that needs to concern itself with your succession. But the Commissioner's Office stands at the ready to be helpful in any way that we can in that, in that transition, and any help from you would certainly be appreciated in that regard as well.
Well, you know, Holly and I, we didn't see, I know a lot of things, I'll say that publicly, but she did say to me, and it's true, that this position here is bigger than any one person. I totally agree with that. So, you know, it's, it's, yeah. It's, it's a big role, but we'll find someone. And I'm, and I've already told this to Todd, and I'll tell it to you, that, you know, I'm not going anywhere. Well, I'm still going to be here in central Ohio, so, you know, I'm not going to lose my cellphone. I'm not going to lose my emails. So anything that can help in transition, you just let me know. And not only the transition, just the day-to-day work, there's anything you need, please reach out.
Thank you, James. Commissioner Levesque, any comments?
Yeah, well, you know, we're certainly going to miss. I was a little disappointed when you canceled the January meeting because I enjoyed coming to these meetings. But you will be tough to replace by. Thank you for all of your service, continued service over the years, and your willingness to be helpful whenever, whenever possible. Thanks again.
Commissioner, please.
James, just thank you. You've done nice work. You've always, when I've gone off on crazy tangents, you know, taken that with the true professionalism, and that's really appreciated. Westerville's lucky to get you, and we're going to miss you.
Yeah, I'm going to miss you all. I mean, one of the, one of the things I really do enjoy about this is the people. I was talking with Sean Hahn, the Administrator of Learn Carroll Schools, and I said, you know, you've got a lot of good folks down here. A lot of good folks, and that's really what I'm going to miss the most. I'm going to miss my wiggly trip down to Bayes because you really can't replace that, that food down there. But it's really, really the people that make this place special. You know, I'm definitely going to miss that. The community down 33, not so much, but we all here in the room. I mean, that's good folks down here. Really good folks.
We're just about to make that commute a little better, so, you know, if you need to reconsider.
James, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being with us this morning, and, you know, we wish you the best in your new endeavors and have all the confidence in the world that you'll, you'll close with class. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, the Commission sets aside an opportunity for voters and taxpayers to address the Commission. If you would like to do so, please come to the podium and begin with your name and residential address. We do have a three-minute rule, which we will enforce today.
Good morning. We've missed the evening about the last three weeks. And due to the fact that so much has happened in Washington, DC, and also effects here in this community, and I'm going to go write a prayer this morning. Lord, we need your help as a nation. We need your help as a state, and even in local community. We need your help to guide and direct us so that we don't make big blunders and mistakes. And we thank you and praise you for this opportunity to come before you. Thanking you for a new year. There's lots of possibilities, and there's going to be a lot of things to work through. So we pray in Jesus' holy name for help along this line. You know, one other thing that I want to bring up. The, I received a letter from Coach Dobbin, which some of you I'm sure are aware of. But he's asking us to contact with, by letter, to the Supreme Court of America because the, the Brunson Brothers, I think is the name. They are just two young men that have taken the situation to the Supreme Court. The Supreme Court accepted it, and they're going to be acting on it this January and come out with the results of what they want to do. But they're not lawyers, but they're being represented by a law firm who hasn't lost a case before the Supreme Court, and he's been up there many times, Matt Saver. And he's encouraging people to send letters to the Supreme Court. I have the letters if you want to do that, and I also have the address and other information I'll pass along to you. But this letter is something that you can copy, send to, give to other people that you know that think the same way you do. This is about what the Congress and the Senate did not do, which was a law when they took the oath, oath to support the Supreme Court.
Thank you, Ray. If you would, please conclude your remarks.
And they will be able to help you if you need help. And our prayer is that they continue to work with the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Judy, Judy's going to follow me, and I'm going to pass this here to the gentleman.
Good morning. Well, COVID hasn't gone away, at least the headlines. The FBI-directed Big Tech censorship could legally violate First Amendment. And then the question has to be asked by us, could this mean that all our county authorities are also be violating the First Amendment? The next one is COVID cash used to boost the guaranteed income projects across the United States. And so then the comment opposed us is, as taxpaying citizens, we should and do want to know where the states and counties' monies come from. And also the video, there's a video on your thing there. Doctors admit autopsies prove that COVID injections are deadly. This is why coroners have been asked not to do autopsies on individuals who died soon after their COVID. And then the great COVID debate on Twitter postponed. Seems like Fairfield County has desired no informative debate either. Next is the monster, the 10-inch blood clot removed from a live person who got COVID shot. Wow. Next, Top Playhouse COVID advisor admits no study in the world shows that masks work. Next, the confidential ficer and the government documents confirm that ADEVA ED and AIDS do to COVID-19 vaccination, leading to millions dying suddenly and still counting. So then we have to ask, as, as if that weren't alarming enough, official documents also prove that a mysterious form of the Acquired Immune Deficiency Syndrome is also appearing in a disturbing number of recipients just five months after their initial injections. And next, the video, Anthony Fashi admits he promoted pandemic gain-of-function research in 18 despite continued denial. Now, will he be held accountable for his lies? Good question. Next is breaking, new Twitter files reveal Big Pharma lobbied Twitter to censor the vaccine debate and negative side effect testimonies. Yes, so we have to ask, so why has our county been pushing the shock? I thank you, and you all have a great morning, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission at this time?
As you can see, COVID is still big news.
Good morning. Stephanie, Habitat for Humanity, Southeast Ohio. I just want to jump up here and say that we are so excited for 2023 and all the really fun things coming. And in just a couple of months, we will be starting House Number Three in Pleasantville. So I hope all of you will come out in some manner, work on it, see it, whatever. But we will be breaking ground on that in the next couple of months. The Career Center is coming along nicely. Again, keep an eye on that. We were talking about 33, as you're going down 33. Look to the left or right, right there behind the school, you'll see it. Wall should be going up here in the next, as in the next couple of weeks progress. So we'll be getting that under roof, and then we will have another house in the fall in Project Playhouse. So lots of great things. I'm sure there will be so much more coming from that. But if you're ever interested in getting involved in other ways, please don't hesitate to let me know. But glad to be back in the swing of the normal things of 2023, and we're excited for what's to come.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the Commission this morning? Well, we thank you all for coming. On legal update. Is that you, Amy? All right. Well, we're all very excited to hear about Wilson Road.
Yeah. Actually, I want to say Josh probably started this project, and Carrie worked on it when she was still Administrator. I think we're at a point where we're about ready to conclude it. City has desires to move forward with this. They need the parcels. We've worked out a maintenance agreement with Wilson Road. They are doing construction to get to the new Google facility, and they need to come across parcels. My understanding, the county is also supportive of this. So this is just more of a memorialization of what engineers, our county engineers' offices worked on, county administration, and our offices kind of helped facilitate those discussions. There will be next week a maintenance agreement for your all's approval, and probably the quitclaim needs as well. We'll stood on one resolution just to get it done. And at that point, it'll be the city's prerogative to inform that. So the county will convey those parcels. The city will maintain the, that piece of the road. They've already signed that agreement, so there's no question about that. And it's my understanding they will be annexing that area in the near future. It was just more of a trying to get all of the property owners on board, and it's my understanding, I think they're farther along with that than they were last year. So that's why I think we're hitting the gas on this from there. If you have any questions, please let me know.
The subject county parcels are what we would historically refer to as remnant parcels as a result of the bypass project. Right. On anything on that?
No, I appreciate Amy's help with that, moving it forward, Stevens as well, and Stephanie Hall with the cities. What for the vacation?
Yeah, Commissioner's fix or Commissioner fix? Thank you for that. This issue, by the way, just, this isn't a change, I don't think, in terms of the Commissioner's Office operation. But touching on something, hearing about something before the resolution is in front of us is preferred. And I appreciate it very much. I did have a question for you, and I know we've kind of touched on this issue before. I think there's a different angle to it that I'm curious about. A year or so ago, Josh made a presentation to the Commissioners regarding sports gaming. And what that presentation dealt with was what we had asked for, which was the establishment, the vendors, the rules and the regulations associated with kind of standing up that industry, if you will. I'm not recalling the details of his presentation. Specifically, I'm not recalling the revenue tracing emanating from that endeavor. But I am curious about it, more so now in this sense. As we look at different revenue streams and projecting those different revenue streams, I, I'm finding myself curious if there is a universe of discretionary funds available for gaming, some of which.
Four.
Four. And then if some of that universe of revenue available for gaming that was going to casinos might now be redirected to sports gaming. And I think there's a difference in terms of how those revenues are treated. So, and to put a fine point on it, I am not aware of any component of sports gaming revenue that comes to counties. And I'm just wondering if perhaps, I'm not asking you if sports gaming is going to detract from casino revenue, but I am asking if you might. I'd take a look back at Josh's presentation, if it was in there and I've forgotten it, or give us a little window on how the sports gaming revenue tracks out.
Actually, Tom did the presentation, but I'll go back. I think he put powerpoint together. I'll see if that was addressed.
So my recollection, if I may?
Yes, please.
We did not address the revenue side. It was strictly about how sports gambling is going to work operationally within the county, within the state. So I think that's an excellent question. I know, yeah, there are ways that that money comes back either to the schools or to local governments. An answer on that would be great.
Appreciate it. And then to you on that same point, Bart, I'm not asking for any change. I'm just suggesting that we monitor that stream like we do all streams, but in this case with a specific eye towards whether there's any statistically significant impact. Anything else?
I don't know.
All right. County Administrator, quarter.
All right. ARP update from the 30.6 million received. 19.6 has been appropriated, 10.3 expended, and 4.9 encumbered are obligated. But also like to do another introduction here. We have our acting dog warden, Leanne Adams. If you wouldn't mind standing and saying hello.
Leanne's been working as acting dog warden now for approximately six months. We appreciate the work that she's done with the shelter. Over Christmas, we had a wonderful adoption promotion that was very successful and helped a lot of the shelter dogs get out of the shelter for the holidays and permanent. So, thank you, Leanne.
Anything you want to add, Leanne?
We appreciate you being with us this morning. Thank you.
In the review packet, you'll also find a memo from the Ohio Public Defender's Office regarding reimbursement rate and administrative code changes. I'll just highlight that they are still forecasting that it'd probably be a 90% reimbursement for the public defense costs and are hoping that that can hold true through the state fiscal year, which ends in June. In the review packet, you also have a letter of request for additional funding from the Humane Society. So we currently have an allocation for 7,500 for a humane officer contribution. And Executive Director Corey Schoonover is looking to increase that to 12,500 to help with increasing costs there. He's also requesting an ongoing commitment for their trap neuter and return program. We had contributed to that last year. We did not have that budgeted for this year, but he is looking for that to be an ongoing commitment. And last year, we had it at $10,000, and he is looking for an increase to 12,500 for that as well. The program began in '21 in the City of Lancaster, and with the county's support, it did extend to all of Fairfield County last year. And he is reporting that the demand for this program was great, was great, and the success even better with over 700 cats in the program. And he's estimating that more than 400 of those are in the county outside of Lancaster city limits.
So on that issue, I did have an opportunity to meet with Corey and kind of go over the statistics and services that are being provided. And I look favorably upon those requests. I asked Corey a little bit about untimeliness of the request as it relates to the budgeting calendar. It wasn't timely, but we'll give him a pass on that, or at least I will. I give my colleagues an opportunity for Commissioner Levesque to question or comment on that request.
No, I, you know, I think especially the bait and neuter of the cats has been kind of a big deal. I'm, I'm kind of surprised it's only 400 outside, outside the city. I would like to see them expand that somewhat. We're going to get more money. Given that, I do agree.
And just a quick point on that. I don't disagree with anything you've said, Commissioner. I think what he's done in terms of the requests that he's made is he's done some ratioing there between inside city limits and outside. So in that sense, the math kind of, but I agree with you that the more of the TNR that can be accomplished, I think, the better. Commissioner Fix.
I'm supportive. I think the Humane Society does a nice job, and, you know, 700 cats and aren't having more cats is a good start. I'm good.
Okay.
Please continue.
Emergency allotments for SNAP are ending in February. So the Family First Coronavirus Response Act allowed states to request emergency allotments for households participating in the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program until the end of either the federal public health emergency declaration or that state's declaration. As a result of that, ODJFS has been providing emergency allotments to SNAP households since March of 2020. ODJFS did inform our local county here that the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, otherwise known as SNAP, SNAP will be ending after nearly three years. This is, there's going to be an intensive communication campaign from the state, as well as I know that Corey's planning that here with RJFS to make sure that folks understand what this means, what that impact is to them. Were you going to expand on that at all?
Yeah, so this is something that we brought up a couple of times because it was renewed every quarter, and each quarter we thought it was going to end, and it didn't, so it kept getting extended further. So at this point, the recipients have received three years' worth of these emergency allotments, and they receive those by getting their normal benefits at the beginning of the month, and then the emergency at the end of the month, the emergency allotment at the end of the month, basically assuming that the customers have a zero income, and that's the amount of benefits that they would get based on that. So March, where's the last month that they get them? And then March will be the first month that they do not receive them. So around the third, fourth week of March is when we expect to hear a lot from the people who are expecting to get that. As Ollie mentioned, there is a massive communication plan, direct mail and emails, text to the customers, as well as a lot of social media and public service announcements. But we know that there'll be a lot of customers who don't really notice that until they don't get their allotment at the end of March. So we expect to receive a lot of feedback from customers at that time. So we expect to receive a lot of feedback from customers at that time when they don't receive those.
So Corey, let me ask you, in your lingo, sometimes we hear the phrase benefit cliff. And when you use that phrase, is this the benefit cliff or are there multiple benefit cliffs?
This could have a, could have a role in the benefit, in the benefit clip or the benefit bridge that program that we have. But this is more, this will more directly impact the families who've been receiving additional funds for their food assistance and now won't. And the other thing to keep in mind is that food costs have gone up substantially during that three-year period. So people have gotten used to those because it's been three years that they've been receiving those benefits. So they've very much gotten used to that. And now this will very much seem like a reduction to their, to their budget.
Are there other types of benefits or supports that have been in place that are also going away? Where is this kind of the leader in that path?
That's a great question. This is kind of the leader Medicaid has also. Nobody could be taken off of Medicaid. So if you qualified for Medicaid and then you got an income, you can increase an income, and you no longer qualify for it during this period, during this three-year period, you stayed on it. You still got those benefits whether you qualified for them anymore or not. This is, that's not being impacted at this time, but it will be soon. And when that is impacted, we actually have to, our agency has to redetermine eligibility for every single Medicaid case in the county, which is going to be a massive effort to undertake.
Another question, which gets a little down in the weeds, and I would certainly understand if you would rather get back to me on this than stab at it, but just on a, say, a monthly basis, can you identify what that number is in, in terms of a gross total on the SNAP?
Of the benefit, like how many customers are receiving it or what the dollar amount?
The dollar amount that is going into the community now that will stop going into the community in late March.
I can, I can definitely get that number for you, but I don't have it on.
Yeah, Bart's going to want that.
It's, it is substantial, I can tell you.
Well, and so, you know, that rolls through the, the local economy. Perhaps never should have and perhaps shouldn't continue. I'm not making an argument on that. Just saying it does, and then it won't.
So it was every single customer receiving food assistance has an increase. Even ones who were already at a zero income got an extra ninety five dollars a month. So every single recipient received, has been receiving more for the past.
Yeah, I remain curious about the gross total. When you get an opportunity to look at that, Commissioner Levacy, any questions or concerns on that? Sure, Fix.
I mean, we've anticipated this now, as you mentioned, for about a year, so. But I know it's still going to cause pain on the customer end when it does come about, and I'm sure we will be overrun with questions and concerns. I'm confident that you and your team have done appropriate planning on the communication side, both before, during, and after. So I appreciate your work.
Thank you, Corey. Nominations for the two thousand twenty-three Central Ohio Senior Citizens Hall of Fame is being requested. The Central Ohio Area Agency on Aging, C O triple A. They honor the exemplary work of older adults who contribute their time and talent to bettering their communities and the lives of others. Honorees are inducted during an annual event that includes families and friends. The twenty-three recognition ceremony is planned for Wednesday, May seventeenth at the Gallery Champions Golf Course in Columbus. Eligible individuals must be sixty years of age or older and a resident of Delaware, Fairfield, Bayett, Franklin, Lincoln, Madison, Pickaway, or Union Counties. The nomination deadline is Friday, February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. If anyone would want to be submitting someone for this, I have that information on eligibility as well as the application.
By the way, just so it's out there, Dave says he's not old enough and he doesn't want.
Highlights and resolutions. The review packet contains a list of administrative approvals. There are thirty-five resolutions for the voting meeting today. Couple resolutions of note. There's a resolution amending the approval of the establishment of the Fairfield County Board of Commissioners review and regular meeting dates. One of those dates is being moved to an evening timeframe. That would be February seventh. A resolution to approve the reappointment of Derek Up to the Fairfield County Board of Developmental Disabilities Board, as well as a reappointment of Todd Edwards to the Fairfield County Regional Planning Commission. There's also a resolution to approve a memo receipt and expense for Stop Loss Pool Subfund and the Self-Funded Healthcare Fund. A resolution authorizing fund-to-fund transfers for intergovernmental agencies for two thousand twenty-three. Those allocations are to RPC, EMA, Soil and Water, Thirty-Three Development Alliance, Engineers Office, and Guardianship Services Board. Also a resolution authorizing a fund-to-fund transfer to the Fairfield County Family Adult Children First Council for multi-youth, multi-system youth, Fairfield County Job and Family Services, multi-county Juvenile Detention Center, and a resolution authorizing twenty-three allocations for Lancaster Public Transit, Lancaster Fairfield Public Transit, and Fairfield County Municipal Court. A resolution authorizing an amendment to the agreement for grant writing with Hicks Partners, and a resolution approving the purchasing of a gun by Deputy Curtis, who is retiring. Rick, do you want to add anything about the amendment for Hicks Partners for the grant writing services?
Yeah, we worked, worked with Hicks to revise how we're doing this next year. We did some wins, actually got another win last week for one of their grants with one of the townships. The gathering of information and just the opportunities weren't there as much as there would be for county entities. So what we did is we expanded this to shift more focus on county agencies and departments to be able to apply for grants. And they'll still be able to apply for grants for cities and townships and villages. But they're just, think that the time would be better spent working on the grants for entities. That's what they presented on at the So they've already scheduled meetings, I think, starting next week with a bunch of teams around this table and other agencies in the county to prioritize what they're seeing.
Thank you.
Please.
Jennifer, just wanted to put on the record the number of positive feedback or the amount of positive feedback that I've gotten, particularly from the townships and some of the villages on their partnership with Hicks. They've done a really nice job of helping folks out, and there's a high level of appreciation that the county commissioners are funding that program, so you get to pass on our thanks to Hicks Partners.
On the resolutions, I'm going to go back to one that Ani mentioned and just extra highlight it, and that's the February seventh meeting. That is not part of our out and about meetings that Commissioner Fix initiated during his presidency. Those will continue this year. This is just more of a scheduling issue. So that's why this February seventh meeting is being moved to the evening. It'll be here, right? At seven P M on February seventh. That's just our morning meeting going tonight here on February seventh. Please continue.
Budget review, Bart?
One thing to bring up, we have been calculating the carryover cash for two thousand twenty-two through to two thousand twenty-three. And we ended the previous year about twenty-five point five million. And current year, we, for two thousand twenty-three, starting off, we came in about thirty-four point five million dollars. So significant increase year over year. So that's a positive impact to the, to the county. Another thing I'd like to bring up real quick about the ARP. Jeff and I are working a lot about, with ARP right now, reconciling everything stuff. And we'll be providing information as we move forward with that through this month, as well as some appropriations adjustments that we'll see next, next week as we process and reconcile things for ARP.
So the one of the policy considerations for the commission over the course of this year is going to be consideration given to the carryover balance. We're certainly appreciate its growth over the last decade or so. But there probably is a policy point where it gets too high. There's certainly room for discussion about whether we're at the right balance in terms of revenue and expense and then declining carryover. And I'm not advocating an answer to that question today, but I do think that we should be given consideration to whether we, from a policy standpoint, have reached a peak or whether fear and concerns about looming recession alleviate that concern about peak. But I, I just think we all need to give some thought to when is when in terms of solidifying that, that carryover and growing.
Anything else, Bart? Thank you. All right, some recognition items. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Chris Wagner for his patience and diligence in working with federal officials regarding updates they need to make to the federal database for CMs.gov. Appreciate his work on that. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked Josh Harper, Noel Saunders, and Josh Ian Dyke for leading the efforts to update the tax rates and bills for twenty-three in a timely fashion. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked the Auditor's Finance and Fable Teams for their work with year-end processes. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked the County Auditor's Office for a productive strategic planning retreat in January the fifth. County Auditor Dr. Brown thanked the G I S and mapping technicians for the terrific map of the month honoring Zane's trace. Thanks to Bart Hampson, Abby Watson, and the rest of the admin team for their work this past week while I was on vacation. Thank you to the facilities team for their outstanding work during the winter storm and related snow removal and heating issues, specifically John and Tammy. I know they were here kind of around the clock for leading up to the Christmas holiday and after the Christmas holiday. Ambiance, right? It was a little chilly though, right?
I'm not sure you're allowed to say that.
He was here by himself a lot of the time. All right, Rochelle, take us into calendar review.
Okay, today, one, one P M, the Commissioners Fix and Levacy will be attending the Transportation Improvement District Meeting, the CFLP Solid Waste District Meeting, the January thirteenth at nine forty-five in Newark. All county commissioners have the land bank board meeting on January seventeenth, and that will be held in this room. Commissioners Fix and Levacy will be attending the R L F Review Committee meeting on January seventeenth at two P M at the Record Center. Lancaster Fairfield County Chamber Connect meeting will be January eighteenth at the Fairfield County Agricultural Center. Economic Development Strategic Plan Steering Committee kickoff meeting will be January twenty-fourth in this room. Downtown Destination Lancaster, Downtown Lancaster Special Improvement District, two thousand twenty-three Annual Gathering is January twenty-sixth at Maria's Mexican Restaurant.
And I will be attending that, and Rick and I will both be at the Economic Development Strategic Plan Steering Committee meeting as well.
Thank you. And also just a reminder that county offices will be closed on January sixteenth in observance of Martin Luther King holiday. Please continue with correspondence.
For correspondence, we have a memorandum from the Office of the Ohio Public Defender dated December fourteenth regarding update on the reimbursement rate and amendments to O A C one twenty dash one dash six and one twenty dash one dash ten. Correspondence, furtherance of Justice Fund Report from the County Prosecutor's Office, an email and plat from Stephanie Paul, City of Lancaster Law Director and City Prosecutor regarding Bowers Memorial Park deed and maintenance agreement with the city. Officer of the Auditor press release, January third, Auditor's Office makes two thousand twenty-two Board of Revision files available for online access. A memorandum from the County Auditor dated January sixth regarding the Strategic Plan Table of Organization, Request for Proposals, Proclamation Requests, and Board of Revision. An op-ed also from the County Auditor, Property Owners Have a Voice in Board of Revision Process. A letter from Adam H. Regarding nominations for the Friend of Adam H. Award. Fairfield Thirty-Three Development Alliance Letter dated December twentieth regarding Community Impact Marketing Programming Initiatives and Member Investments. Fairfield Area Humane Society Letter dated December twentieth regarding support. A letter from a resident regarding Eastern Cotton Tail Solar Project. A letter of resignation from James Mako that we previously discussed. Decorative Arts Center of Ohio Reese Peters House Membership Letter and Application. Auditor's Ledger News from the County Auditor's Office from December. And finally, the Fairfield County Health Department Quarterly Newsletter for the Fourth Quarter of Twenty-Two.
Thank you, Rochelle. Sheriff has kept me up to date on the jail population during our meeting absence on December twenty-seventh. It was two thirty-nine with twenty-five being contracted placements. Last week, January third, it was up to two sixty-one with thirty-one of those being contracted placements. Today, he reports the overall total at two thirty-five with twenty-five of those being contracted placements. That's all I have, Commissioner.
Yeah, and I think everybody that's been kind of paying attention to those numbers probably knows the fluctuation in out-of-county inmates and, you know, something just to continue to keep an eye on. Is there any old business that you'd like to be interested in, Commissioner, starting with Commissioner Levacy?
So, you know, obviously over the Christmas, New Year's holiday, I believe it was December twenty-second, twenty-third, we had a pretty good storm. So I want to thank Jeremiah and the Engineers Office for all their good work. You know, I, I, I mean, it was pretty bad. It almost reminded me a little bit of nineteen seventy-eight, if anybody remembers that. But yeah, Jeremiah, thank yourself and your employees for all your good work because it had to be difficult as far as that wind was blowing.
I'll make sure I pass that on. They're the guys that did it. Really, they came in over Christmas, away from their families and whatnot, so. I put a little thing on Facebook thanking them and just kind of asked everybody to be patient. They're out there filing on Christmas. They gotta get down and play faster, that kind of stuff, so. And they did it happily. They care about the county, they care about the roads. And it was difficult, not that we had a ton of snow, but the wind and being that cold, that snow doesn't pack and all it does is blow. It seems like blowing snow likes ditches of roadworks. Those guys were happy to do it.
I don't even know how you see the road in that type, in those type of conditions, so.
I've been out with them a few times.
So as well as it's been, been mentioned earlier with John and facilities, all the good work your employees did, keep taking care of business because, you know, in the past, we've had several buildings freeze up freeze pipes and so on and so forth. So thank you for that work. I said it all as well. Thank you.
Jeremiah, follow up with Commissioner Levacy. I obviously join in the appreciation. Curious, I think the sheriff has a kind of a no-win situation when he declares the level of emergency. If he declares it a two, people think it should be three. If he declares it a one, they think it should be two. And other people think, well, it's crazy. It's just a little bit of snow. Why are you declaring anything? I was just curious, do you have any role in that at all? In other words, does the sheriff reach out to your group and say, hey, you know, what are you seeing out there? Or is he just relying on his, his folks that are out there?
Not required to, but in situations where it's, we're tipping. Most of the time, he does call me, talk to me about what I think we're receiving from out of county.
Yeah.
I mean, if it's an obvious no-brainer, it's level three.
Yeah, I suspected that kind of communication might occur. I just wasn't sure. Again, thank you all for what you did there. I suspect. That's great. Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Levacy? Commissioner Fix?
Can I piggyback on that last one? Think as we were closing, you know, the county offices for that following day, appreciate everyone being very cooperative and helpful during that process. It was, it's very collaborative. I'm sorry.
Oh, absolutely. Commissioner Fix?
I'd just forgotten how much longer these meetings are when you're in charge. I'm looking for a ticket right here.
That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
That's one for Jeff in two thousand twenty-three.
Got it. Well, we still have to do new business. So, Commissioner Fix, you seem to have a lot on your mind.
I'm good. Thank you. Actually, today, this, you know, 10:30, assuming we get through this meeting on time, we do have a follow-up meeting to our housing symposium. We've got a lot of folks there in this room and some from outside. It's a way to circle back on that meeting that we had, I think it was last May. I know we've made a lot of progress in a lot of areas, but I just wanted to kind of document that and, you know, set forth some next steps so that we've got a solid plan for 2023.
Thank you. Commissioner Levisy on new business?
So, you know, I am looking forward to 2023. I think it's going to be a great year. I think we're going to continue to get a lot accomplished, especially at the Workforce Center. I think that that has great potential. And again, I appreciate Rick and all of his good work, as well as everybody that serves within the county, you know. Fairfield County is a great place to live, and we're going to make it better. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick note on new business. I think I may have mentioned it last month, but on January 17th, County Administrative Court and I will meet with Transit Director Chaslin Carter as a part of that continuing discussion about transit in the community. There are lots of responsibilities that transit has and is legally required to carry out, but we're, we continue to find ourselves curious if we're hitting the right policy point in terms of getting people who want to work to work. We want to continue to think that through and see if we're where we should be on that point. Any other new business that anybody would like to bring your attention to, Commissioner, this time? Dr. Brown?
So, I would like to draw your attention to the strategic plan updates for the County Auditor. They're on our website. We had a retreat on January 5th, and a common theme at the retreat was technology, and there was thanks for the commissioners in terms of the software service. That has really changed the way that we're able to do month-in and year-in. For example, we worked on New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, and we're able to run reports in 20 minutes that used to take 35 minutes to three hours. There was a range of those. And so, that's been very helpful in being able to be more efficient in financial reporting. We were also able to proceed with the tax calculations, which we didn't receive from the state until New Year's Eve. So, that was very helpful to have the technology upgrades. In addition, we were reviewing last night the budget actual financial reports. And for revenues, in the general fund, we were at 107% for 2022, and we believed we'd be in the sweet spot somewhere between 105 and 110%. Typically, in the past, that number hasn't had as much practicality use, and it was 135 to 150%. So, we're right at that sweet spot between 105 and 110, which is where I think, from a policy standpoint, is about where you want to be. You don't want to be too low, for example, and you don't want to be too high because it gives you, in the future, as you're thinking about your carryover, an ability to think about other types of policy as far as using that carryover, when you have a time in the future, perhaps even distant future, where that will make more of a impact to your budgeting. I also just want to report that we have an RFP that we're going out in the first quarter of 2023 for the 2025 sexennial update. It'll take about two years to do that, and that's not a contract that flows through the commissioners. So, here in this meeting, I just wanted to report that it is happening, and it'll probably be in the neighborhood of about $1.8 million. Board of Revision deadline is March 31st for everybody, and we do have the op-ed piece, which is getting a lot of good feedback. So, thank you for those of you who have added some information to that to allow for a really good flow in that read.
On behalf of the Commission, we appreciate what we're seeing out of your office. It's a marked change from an historical perspective, and we appreciate it.
Really wish y'all could have been there at the retreat. I mean, there's a lot of very positive comments about everybody in this room, a lot of good enthusiasm, very good energy. It's very inspiring. And I also did bring a couple of the Zane's Grant maps, just if anybody is interested. I'm starting to do some interesting work in reviewing things about my house. I thought it was built around 1860. Looks like it might have been built a little bit earlier than that. It is part of the original Zane's Grant, and as is a lot of the area in downtown Lancaster. So, it's just very interesting. The house was begun to be built the same year that Edgar Allan Poe wrote The Raven. I found that interesting. I'm doing a timeline in my house about interesting things like that for Halloween. So, thinking about it now, even though there's months away, I just thought it was interesting to find that type of history in the maps, too.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Just real quick, late last night, we were informed that we, our water rescue teams awarded the firehouse subs committee for about $31,000. So, that will refresh our team's ability to go into those situations that they need to do. So, really happy to see that, and you'll see information come.
Will your team be on-site on January 29th?
Yeah, actually, we do support that. We were there. We were waiting, watching you.
Okay.
And the sheriff this year and whoever else is jumping.
I don't know if you noticed or not, but Ben and I were supposed to jump at the same time, but he hesitated just for a second because he thought for sure I was going to chicken out at the last minute. Anyway, Representative Larray will be jumping. Sheriff Lade is apparently going to jump into the freezing cold water. And so, you know, all hands on deck. We can't have anything happen.
Absolutely.
So, I'm sponsoring that for a united way. That means I don't have to jump in.
Good, good.
And I'm just not going to do it.
On the other hand, Jeff Porter is going to do it. So, I'm told. I mean, and I don't think there's been a public commitment on this issue, but there might be now.
If there's not a requirement of what you have to wear, I can look up the dry season.
It would be a visual, just me getting into the dry season. Commissioner Levisy?
Well, last year, about this time, we had about 6, 8 inches ice on the lake. Right now, we have virtually none, so it'll be different. So, I do have a question regarding the water rescue. You know, initially, I was involved with some of that Lower Port Fire having their own rescue.
So, how does that work right now? What departments do you have?
We have, I believe, representatives from seven departments over the county fire departments. We, the Emergency Management Agency, is the administrator for the team with your support. If you remember last year, we purchased a new vehicle for the team, which is huge for them. And then, those representatives go on a mutually basis to whatever jurisdiction needs that help for a water issue. So, you know, it's definitely a semi-volunteer type of team, and it's a huge resource in the community, just like our husband.
Any other new business? Here you go. We'll move on to promoting Pat.
Please rise if you're able to join us in the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is implied in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, in whose rule we trust this law.
Thank you. Rochelle, do we have any announcements?
There are no new announcements.
Move on to the approval minutes for December 20th, 2022 special meeting, and the January 9th, 2023 reorganization meeting.
So, moved. Second.
Got a motion in the second discussion. Hold up a pair of shoes. If I was standing, I...
Aye.
Same sign motion carries in endlessly, Rochelle.
In the Commissioner's Office, we have Resolution 2023-1-10.A, a resolution to designate two members of the Board of the Fairfield County Commissioners to serve on the Fairfield County Investment Advisory Committee.
The Commissioners, I move items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, and Q.
Second.
Yes, let me just note that this, the resolution dealing with the stop loss is the initial establishment of a reserve or a sub-fund for our portion of our new self-funded stop-loss insurance. So, we'll be moving that amount to the new sub-fund and ultimately making our annual payment sometime in February when our final claims for 2022 come.
The movement is $2 million?
$2 million.
And I was briefed on this this morning. We're going from approximately 7.7 in the reserve balance to a primary fund to 5.7 reserve balance in the primary fund after this change.
That is correct. Historically, our reserve balance has been around $2 million for the program for the self-funded insurance, and we, you know, based upon last year's premium holidays and establishment of the HRA, we're coming out pretty good.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I know that you spend an inordinate amount of time working on and worrying about those issues. You know, on behalf of the Commission, we continue to express our appreciation for your work.
Thank you.
In addition to the discussion.
I want to note, there are a couple of resolutions here of appointments for folks who are willing to continue to serve in a couple of capacities, directly back with the Fairfield County Board of Disabilities and thought it works with the Regional Planning Commission. I think it's appropriate to continue to express our appreciation for those folks who are willing to serve in various capacities on many boards that make comments for the discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levisy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed 3-0 from the Fairfield County Auditor Office. We have Resolution 2023-1-10.R, a resolution granting Dr. Carrie L. Brown, County Auditor, and staff permission to attend travel.
So moved.
Certified requirement for the commissioners to approve the travel, which is bound by the budget restriction already.
Further discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levisy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 from Fairfield County Economic and Workforce Development, Resolution 2023-1-10.S, a resolution to authorize an amendment to the agreement for grant writing services.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. I think this is what we've already described and reviewed for the discussion.
Please call roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levisy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 from Fairfield County Emergency Management Agency, Resolution 2023-1-1.10.T, a resolution to appropriate from unappropriated in a major expenditure object category EMA funds and a transfer of appropriations.
Under EMA, I'll move items T, U, V, and W.
Second.
Two points to resolutions regarding the grants that we received this year and your promulgation of the Emergency Operations Plan. Thanks to Tiffany Warner for putting that together and getting the process done again for another year. And we sent you a little paper today and only gave you the promulgation and the executive summary rather than the 300-page document.
Thank you.
Who gave you that word, promulgation?
Promulgation. What does that mean?
No, I know.
Oh.
Yes.
Commissioner Levisy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed 3-0 from the Fairfield County Engineers' Office, Resolution 2023-1.10.X, a resolution to authorize the use of force account by the Fairfield County Engineer.
Under Fairfield County Engineer, I move items X, Y, and Z. Second.
Force accounts, I just want to say for people in here that don't know what those are, we have limitations, and they're called force account, how much actual work we could do as the engineer with our forces. Okay? So, what that boils down to is I'm allowed to do, I believe it's $32,000 per lane mile of work on a rip, which means I can't do anything as far as building a road or painting a road. We can chip seal because that's considered maintenance. We're allowed to do that. On a bridge, we're limited to $100,000. That number has been in place. It's 2003, 20 years ago. So, you can only imagine how much less I could do now for $100,000 than I could. My County Engineers Association is in a battle at the legislative level to try to get, at least get an inflationary change to that number, and we're beaten, being that was a pretty swift opposition from the Contractors Association. So, just want to let everybody know that, you know, we're working hard at the state level to get to where we can do more work in-house, which will allow us to do more work overall and do a better job, but we've got some opposition. So, appreciate your time.
Mr. President. Mr. Fix?
So, the CCO is also in that fight and pushing as hard as we can. It's one of the priorities in our legislative agenda this year. So, happy to support that and push that as far as we can.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you. Mr. Levisy? So, I agree with everything you've said. 2003, that's a long time. You know, not only are you constrained by townships, ours as well, and it's a bogus number, needs to be fixed. So, I myself am going to talk to the legislators and ask for their continued support to get that thing fixed.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Further discussion. Please call roll.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levisy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed 3-0 from Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council, Resolution 2023-1.10.AA, approval of an amendment to a subaward to the Fairfield County Family, Adult, and Children First Council from the Research Institute of Nationwide Children's Hospital for State Fiscal Year.
So moved. Second.
This is the second part of our agreement with Nationwide Children's Hospital, the R3, basically, after all the purchases. Thank you. Further discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levisy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes 3-0 from Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, Resolution 2023-1.10.BB, a resolution authorizing reduction in major expenditure object category appropriations for Title IV, E-Fun 2641.
Fairfield County Juvenile Probate Court, I move items BB and CC. Second.
Just a note unrelated to the specific legislation, but more broadly, on juvenile court, I am in communication with administration at MCJDC, and we're planning the beginning of negotiations regarding the next three-year contract of the juvenile court, specifically, that system's been very helpful in providing data that might influence those negotiations. And I think we've previously discussed Judge Vandermore will join me in that effort to negotiate acceptable next three-year term. Further discussion.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levisy?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed 3-0 in the Fairfield County Recorder, Resolution 2023-1.10.DD, a resolution granting Fairfield County Recorder Lisa McKenzie permission during 2023 to attend. A resolution granting Fairfield County Recorder Lisa McKenzie permission during two thousand twenty-three to attend.
So moved, second.
Discussion.
Same base to the officers.
I hope you all have fun places to go.
Further discussion?
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Resolution passes three zero from the Fairfield County Sheriff's Office. Resolution three dash one dot ten dot E. A resolution to approve the purchasing of a gun by a retiring officer.
In the Fairfield County Sheriff, I move items E E and F F. Second.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero from South Central Major Crimes Unit. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one dot ten dot G. A resolution to authorize the establishment of a new fund for Fairfield Hocking Athens Major Crimes Unit appropriate from unappropriated.
Under Major Crimes Unit, we have items G G and H H. Second.
Discussion.
It's got the wrong label on H H, but that has been adjusted.
Within the resolution.
It's a resolution.
Thank you. Further discussion? Please call.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion's passed three zero. Payment of bills. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one dot ten dot I. A resolution authorizing the approval of payment of invoices for departments that need Board of Commissioners approval.
So moved. Second.
Please call.
Commissioner Fix?
Yes.
Commissioner Levesey? Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero. The next regular meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, January seventeenth at nine AM.
Is there any other issue I, anybody might bring your attention to, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
For sure, send me a chat.
So I, I wanted to say how much I appreciate that while we take our work very seriously and I feel like we are the best-run county in the state of Ohio, that we allow ourselves the opportunity to have some fun in these meetings and laugh a couple of times. So many of the commissioners that I've talked to from around the state don't have this kind of relationship in their work environment. One commissioner is not talking to another or they're fighting with their clerk or their sheriff or whatever. We don't have that here and while we talk about it from time to time, it's good to laugh. I appreciate the environment that we allow for that here in Fairfield County. Lastly, so, you know, I don't usually stick my nose in the state house business, but because the state has so much to do with what we're able to do here, I wanted to commend our state representatives, Larray and Miller, who participated in the naming of the new Speaker of the House of the State of Ohio. It could have gone really badly for the state and for Fairfield County in particular. And because of the actions that they took, Fairfield County is actually in a very strong position within the House of Representatives in the state. And I just wanted to publicly express my appreciation. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Further discussion or any other issue I, anybody would like to bring your attention to, Commissioner, at this time? I'll accept the motion.
Motion to adjourn?
I got a motion to adjourn in a second, all those members in the House and I.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries. Mission is adjourned and we thank you all for coming.